And please bow your head for a moment of silence for 21 seconds for our 21 beautiful souls. Thank you. Please remain standing for our invocation by Youth Minister Travis Johnson.
Lord, we thank you for this community of Uvalde. God, we pray for our students as they are in coming towards the end of summer, that you would keep them safe and protected and healthy and just be preparing them as they go into this new school year. Lord, we pray for the members of our school board, that you would just grant them wisdom and guidance and direction as they lead our school district. God, we lift up all the, the teachers, the administrators, the staff, everyone who is involved in this education system here in Uvalde. God, that you would just have your hand over them, protect them, guide them, give them comfort, give them peace. God, we love you and we ask all this in your name. Amen.
Now say our pledges. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on the nation's under God, indivisible, with every being just as well.
Honored by my Texas life, I pledge allegiance to the Texas state of God.
Item two, superintendent's report. Ms. Colas?
Sir, thank you. Right, so tonight. Got it. Trustees, I'm gonna report this out to y'all based on the proposed goals that y'all wrote last Tuesday night that are up for adoption tonight. So, under domain one, a high-quality curriculum and effective instruction. District leadership retreat, I wanted to report to y'all that based on the proposed board goals for adoption tonight, we've begun creating the district improvement plan and will lead the departments and campuses through the development of their improvement plans next week. That'll be July 24th through the 26th at the district leadership retreat in Concan. That'll be funded completely through the generosity of donors. We were able to take the leadership off-campus and completely focus on this very important work. Again, I'm gonna stress that this is not paid for with local funds and I want to thank our sponsors for their very generous support of UCISD as we again focus on how to align our work with our leadership teams based on the board goals that y'all wrote and will adopt tonight. Hopefully. Domain two, effective and well-supported staff. I'd like to commend the board for taking the first steps last Tuesday night, engaging in our Texas Strategic Leadership Initiative. In action items tonight, we'll, the, we have proposed board goals that our team of eight wrote to guide the district and begin to align our work right down to the student level. Along with that, I've been selected as one of 11 superintendents from across the state to participate in the superintendent's leadership cohort at the Holesworth Center, which is an 18-month-long journey that will also support our work together, supporting staff and effectively leading the district. I just wanted to let y'all know that both of these strategic leadership programs complement each other and are at no cost to the districts, either one of them. They're both at no cost to the district, so I'm excited about both of those. And to get started with that. Domain three, positive school culture, safety and security. I wanted to give y'all an update on Syntejix, which is coming online for the new school year. The staff training is scheduled for the start of the year. Our leadership will be trained August 5th and 6th, I believe. They will be trainer of trainers in order to train their staff members and that includes local law enforcement. We will still be using standard response protocol as we have before. What's new is the method by which our staff members will alert for a response or for an emergency situation. This technology does not depend on a staff member's mobile phone working in all areas of the school, which we hope will give parents and staff members peace of mind. I'll remind everyone that the cost of Syntejix was completely donor and grant funded. Due to the fact that we don't know when we will regain control of the Rob school building due to litigation, I'm going to ask the board to initiate a committee of stakeholders to include two trustees to begin to decide on and find funding for a more permanent remembrance marker at the corner in front of Rob where the crosses are currently at. Obviously, the long-term plan is for a memorial site to be built where the building is currently standing, but until we can begin to plan for that, once we have control of the building again, this is what we can do. So, I wanted to ask if we have some volunteers that may, two board members that will sit on a committee to work on funding with stakeholders and what we can put at the corner that's more permanent, that'll weather, you know, won't get weathered and that can honor.
Yeah, I think, well, one of them for sure would need to be Mr. Trustee Riesel.
Appreciate it.
Okay. All right. Would anyone else like to volunteer to be on that committee?
I will volunteer to help him.
Okay, thank you so much.
I'd like to thank Ms. Colas for bringing this to the table. You know, it's a it's a conversation that must be had. It's sometimes uncomfortable. It's, it's uncharted, you know, it's, it's tough. But I think, you know, from there, we can expand on different things. There's a lot of things that we could do better. And just never been through anything like this, so thank you for bringing this up.
Yes, sir. And, you know, any, you know, I'm open to feedback, so anytime you feel like we can do anything better, I always appreciate your feedback, so.
How will, how will the, the other stakeholders be asked to?
Yeah, open, well, I was thinking probably some of the Rob, a couple of Rob teachers that were there. And
Family.
Yeah, family members. Just gonna kind of open it up and to the two board members to that took it on to get some stakeholders and just kind of talk about what was good representation for the community.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll schedule a meeting with the two. And get a list of names, so we'll work on that. Okay. Trustees, I wanted to also make y'all aware that I'll be a participant at a safety summit for superintendents across the country through one of my professional organizations, the American Association of School Administrators. That'll be at the end of this week. I'll be out Monday and Tuesday of next week. But the goal of this organization is to help school administrators connect with each other and better lead districts and shape policy, a whole lot of policy. So, I was, I'm participating by special invitation and at no cost to the district. Again, I'll be out Monday and Tuesday of next week to participate in that. The, it's focus is safety and security policy at the national level, so I'll be again, working on that. And that's, again, the travel, the conference, everything is at no cost to the district. Are there, y'all have any questions about that? Okay. Domain four, alignment of financial well-being with student achievement. We have a special request for the necessary budget and staffing matters prior to the start of the school district. And we were gonna talk about, I'm Ms. Bendali, is August 5th gonna be too soon? We had talked about August 5th, but you were gonna look into whether that was too soon? Okay. Okay, so then I will get in touch with y'all and we'll figure out if it needs to be August 5th or that following Monday. So, I'll let y'all know. If y'all could just kind of keep that in mind, that we're gonna need to have a meeting prior to the start of school. Then I just wanted to let you know that at your seats, you'll find a list of upcoming events for August. Lots of meet the teacher events, which you are welcome to join us at, and then the first day of school is August 12th. And so, we are looking forward to having our kiddos back and welcoming them to the 24, 25 school year. I can't even believe that I'm saying that. Yes. We're excited about the start of school. So, that concludes my superintendent's report.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you, ma'am.
Item four, or item three, open forum. Just a reminder that it's three minutes to speak and board members cannot respond to questions or comments. First speaker will be Priscilla Rodriguez. You know, okay, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Diana Carew?
Good evening, Diana Alvedo Carew. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Bendali for an absolutely excellent presentation. She made the information very simple enough for people like myself who are not good at math and numbers, so thank you very much. Also, as she talked about, the possibility of going to the voters for a two-cent per hundred-dollar valuation tax increase. I sit on the appraisal review board for Uvalde County and I'm very concerned that we would be adding tax burden to people that are already overburdened with taxes. There's also an emergency service district that is looking to generate taxes, become a taxing entity. And so, I'm concerned for the citizens of Uvalde County and this district being continually asked to pay taxes or services. I'd rather you look at how you increase your attendance. Police department, the school district has had quite an adventure with your police department since it was first created. I think you've had quite a number of turnovers. Here again, you're in the midst of trying to find another police chief and I wonder if you have ever considered contracting those services and using the dollars that you've already earmarked for, for that particular task with someone that can be more capable of providing that security for the school district. The primary reason that I wanted to speak to the board today was in support of a presentation that you're going to be listening to tonight from the Empowerment of Community and Action Foundation. It actually dovetails really well with the fact that you're forming a committee to look at a marker of remembrance for the Rob school massacre and tragedy. I would strongly urge the board members that have been appointed to this committee to consider Mr. Lalo Castillo and Ms. Meli Nava to sit on that committee with you. These individuals have been actively involved for a number of months, if not a year, looking at how we create not only a memorial for memorializing that event, but also creating a community center where the residents, not, not only of the whole district, but for me, the residents of the west side of Uvalde who have historically been underserved could utilize those services to great advantage and we wouldn't leave that campus desolate, empty, overgrown grass. You know, we need to continue to find ways to revitalize the west side of Uvalde and the children and the families that are part of those communities. So, if you would consider Mr. Lalo Castillo and Meli Nava to be part of the committee and ongoing and into the future as we begin to flesh out more opportunities with that property, I would appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rodriguez, if you'd like to, you can call me tomorrow. I know you what you want to talk about. If you need anything clarified, I'd be glad to do that. If you have my number, I think. Or I'll get it to you. Thank you. Item four, consent agenda. A, minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on May 13th, 2024. Item B, minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees held on June 17th, 2024. Item C, item of information regarding maintenance and operations. Item D, item of information regarding transportation. Item E, item of information regarding SFE. Item F, item of information on the district's investment activity for June 24. G, item of information on the district's credit card activity for June 24. Item H, item of information on the tax collection activity for June 2024. Any board member wish to pull any of the consent agenda?
No question.
Entertain a motion that we pass it?
Mr. Board President, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion made by trustee Suarez, seconded by trustee Riesel. Any further comments? Seeing or hearing none, all in favor? Passes unanimously. Item number five, items of division of administration and operations. Item A. And item of information on TASB update 1, 2, 3.
Thank you, President Lambert. In your packet, trustees, you'll find the policy manual update 123 and this is just an item, an item of information for this board meeting. You will have the next month to look over it, ask any questions. Legal policies are ours to keep. We do not get to change them. They are given to us by the state of Texas and legislation that the it's on your laptop. Yes, it's on your laptop in the packet sent to you through Board Book. I apologize. And so, you will be able to review the legal policies, but we cannot make any changes to them because they were adopted into law by our legislators. Local policies that you find in the update, those we are able to make some adjustments to based on our practice, as long as they are in line with legal policy. We do next have some of our administrators coming up to talk about some of those adjustments that we are recommending. But I, I'm giving this to you this month for your, for y'all to look at and if you have any questions, you can call me during the month. And we can talk about them. And then next month, we will bring them back to you likely under consent to adopt. So, if you have any questions about them, you're welcome. I know that y'all may have looked at them already. If you have any questions, I'm happy to entertain them, or if you want to call me during the month, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just, I have a question. For the, for those policies, is there something that we can compare to what they were, like, like how you present the next ones that you're gonna talk to us about, but is there one that will show the language that's changed?
Yes, so in, you should have gotten the comparison packet. Was that in there? Yeah, yeah, so the comparison packet is there as well, and so it shows you marked out in red what it used to be and then usually in blue, it is what the new policy will be.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I, I see it now. I just saw the other version of it and I was like, what's changed?
Yes, so the, I'll go, yes, the, it's a lot, it's a lot of paper, so the local comparison packet is what you'll want to look at first and then you can go through and look at all the rest of it. So, if you have any questions during the month, just give me a call and then we can talk about it. All right.
Item 5B, item of information on local district policy DEC.
All right, next. I'll call up, was DEC, is it Norma? All right, Ms. Karanza?
Gotta get through all that. Good evening, Board President, Superintendent and Board of Trustees. Uh, DC local is on the leave of employees. So, if you turn to page 458 at the bottom. The mental health leave is new to the policy and this is for police peace officers. They will continue to get mental health days. Just letting you read it a little bit before I go on. Quarantine leave is also for police or peace officers. This is when it'll be ordered by a local health authority, so this will be as needed and this, the superintendent can approve these days. Line of duty illness, this is an extension for the peace officers, also as needed in the absence of if they fall ill or they're hurt in the line of duty. Page 460. This one has be, has been revamped from the previous policy. If you see all this that's in red, all this was taken out. And if you turn the page, this is, the blue is what we have put in there to be a policy through your approval. So, the main thing is the accumulation of leave and how it's gonna be paid out. Right now, we pay out sixty dollars per day as you're leaving. That will go away and this would only be paid during retirement. If you have told us 90 days in advance for retirement, you may use your days paid at daily rate. Professionals up to $3,000 and paraprofessionals up to 1,500 for state and for local. And it's only for retirees, not resignations.
So, I'll just add, so trustees, we had to add in, it's a requirement by law, if you have a police force, you have to have legally, you have to have the mental health leave and the quarantine leave for officers is why we had to add that in for them because that's legal. And then, we had previously been paying local leave at a maximum of 30 days a school year at sixty dollars a day for any employee that left us, which that is not no other school district does that. I can tell you right now, that's not, usually it's upon retirement that districts will pay out. You know, if, if people voluntarily resign their contract and they're going to another district, they've gotten another job. That's whenever people get paid, you know, for their unused days. I'm not talking about if we have a separation and they're leaving because it's a mutually agreed upon thing and we have to buy out a portion of their contract because they're leaving mid-year and it's agreed upon that we're gonna buy out a portion of their contract. And we would have had to pay them anyway for hired attorneys. This is, I've gotten a job in La Pryor School District. I have saved 30 of my school days that I have not taken and I want to sell them to the district at sixty dollars a day, so the district is now going to pay me for my days. That is not something that is normally happens in most districts. If you're not retiring, you don't get paid for unused leave. And so.
And the main point to also put down is that it has to be 90 days of notice for retirement. So, you can't tell us within two weeks that you're retiring and get paid the, the money.
Is that, is that chapter 21 contract people or is that everybody?
All.
Everybody?
Yeah, or it's, it's, this is professional? It just says, an employee.
For the 90 days retirement and then 30 days for.
So, 90 days for chapter 21 contracts, 30 days for, yeah, for everyone else.
And this isn't in an employee handbook?
It is going to be as soon as you approve it or not approve it, so then we put it in there.
So, we're looking, we're looking at the old business, right, and we're saying this is something that's normally not done of the districts and we're saying this has gotta trim it or we have to make some changes.
Right, we need to, that'll reduce the amount of money that we're paying out as people leave and hopefully people will decide to stay and retire, hopefully want to retire with us if we're, if we're offering retirement.
And I'm sorry, one other thing, you have to have 10 consecutive years? 10 consecutive years with a district to get the payout?
To get the payout?
Yes. As we build fund balance, as we start to rectify our financial situation and we start to build fund balance. You know, we would like to be able to pay for more days of our retirees. You know, if they're saving their days and they're staying with us longer, we would love to build in more of an incentive for our employees to stay with us longer and to not use their days. But for right now, this is what we can afford to do. Retirees. Previously, I can tell you that we were paying out far more and so it's, this is far less than what we have been paying when people retired for lots and lots of days at their daily rate. We cannot afford to do that. And it's not that we don't appreciate people for everything that they've done for the district, because many people have worked 30 years for the district and saved a lot of their days and have really been planning on getting a nice check. And we're just not in a position to be able to do that anymore.
It's understandable too, and then, you know, as long as we're comparable to other districts and, and, and we're fair, you know, across the board stuff, so it's, any, any reorg, you know, you know.
Will we be, how will we be advising the employees of this change? I mean, do, are they gonna go through like a training to help them understand this?
We, so it'll be there in their employee handbook and we will, in our principal meetings every month, we're gonna be going through PowerPoints that we are, it's sort of like, gonna be like train the trainer, so this will be a big topic that we will train principals and have them turn that back around to their staff to say, okay, this is an important change that you need to know about because the district can no longer afford to do this, but here's what they are going to do.
And in a few years, if we build up our fund balance, we can come back and change this.
Absolutely. In some time, once we build fund balance and we can afford to, you know, have a bigger payout at retirement for people, absolutely, we can do that. If that's something that y'all want to do to incentivize people to stay for longevity and to not take days, absolutely, we can do that.
And so, we're reviewing this right now and then the next time we hear this, then we'll be approving it, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
And in comparison to, say, other districts, this is comparable. Obviously, this is the local, so then we have the legal, the legal, we're in line with with the requirements, the state requirements, but now we're just framing it according to what our district needs are, is that what?
And according to what we can afford. Other districts offer a little more, some districts may offer less. It kind of depends on what you can afford and what you want to incentivize.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Norma.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Item 5C, item of information on local district update EHBE.
All right, Ms. Graber?
Good afternoon, Superintendent Colas and our wonderful board members. Our EHBE is the bilingual update. So basically, what we did in this particular section for you to review is we added a language allocation chart, basically it's by grade level. What percentage of instruction will be in English and what percentage will be in Spanish, so we added that chart. And then we removed administrative regulations. And so that was recommended by Tasby to put those into our handbooks and our administrative regulations, not in the local policy. So you will see LPAC specifically, uh teacher training, uh draw uh dual language program goals, eligibility for dual language and eligibility and participation eligibility that were will be removed and added into our dual language handbook. Um so that's basically what we did with the bilingual piece.
Sorry, Ms. Graber, um you said that we're adding something to this or is uh everything's been, that's proposes the deletion?
Um there there was one in there that had the little chart, that's like kindergarten, it was eighty twenty.
I see it.
And first.
Wasn't in the blue, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, because we had to totally. Making sure I sent it to Mika. Um yes, sir, that one we had to rewrite with Tasby, so they didn't have a simple fix and it wasn't part of the one twenty-three. So we were going back and forth with her and Dr. Fadon and the campuses as well, so that one wasn't a one twenty-three, so we were building that.
Thank you.
So this is um the dual language program is for ESL students, is that right?
The bilingual program is for any student identified as English language proficient.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
English ling- or I'm sorry, limited English speaking, so they do not speak English, um English is not their first language.
Okay, so then do we have other areas of this the district that um attempts to for ESL students?
Actually, by uh the dual language program is our only bilingual program that we adopt in the district, so that was our adoption.
And I saw in that previous code, um policies is the percentage of students that are ESL students in comparison to those that are English speaking that can be admitted, is that right?
Is that in the dual language program, those are program guidelines.
And so then is it sixty forty, is that the number sixty percent of the class should be ESL, Spanish speaking and forty percent?
Not the class per se, the grade level, so like when we enroll pre-K, that is our goal to do sixty percent in enrollments that are um EB, English um emergent bilingual or I'm trying to think of all the acronyms, but they're not, um first language is not um English and then sixty percent uh forty percent will be our English language proficient, our English proficient students.
Is the goal of this program to eventually get them back into or keep them there? Um because when I was reading that, it almost sounded like we were trying to get them back into a system um within the district, but this sounds like it's its own individual um school.
It is, and the program is for for them to continue, so even when they meet the guidelines to become English proficient, we want to make sure that they're bilingual and they are biliterate. And so we keep them in the dual language program um for that that biliterate piece. But the program guidelines for Texas is making sure that we have support for them and that we offer that support. So it was more of just the dual language is a different program, but making sure we have a support for bilingual students.
How do you um address the ESL students and they're like, how do you pull them in, I don't, I is that just upon them registering and they say that they they speak Spanish or their 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 primary language is Spanish and I I don't know how they.
There's a home language survey, so by the state of Texas, we have to use the home language survey. And so if they identify any other language, whether it's Russian or whatever other than English, then we pull them for an oral language proficiency test. And then from there, we are able to identify them as through the LPAC meeting, kind of like an R meeting, through the LPAC meeting, we will identify them as um emerging bilingual. Trying to remember all the acronyms, we just use the acronyms without thinking them, so it's um the.
I think it's like non-emergent bilinguals and then emergent, right, is that?
Emergent bilingual. Like they just changed it, it was left but not anymore.
It was three hundred pages, so I tried to read it, it was a lot of information, but I was trying to understand that a little bit more. Um and because I read somewhere there that it almost sounded like it needed to be within like the regular school program, like the regular facility, but we have it separated.
Well, we don't have an ESL program, we have the bilingual program, so unfortunately, if a parents are like, no, I do not want them in the program, they do become parent denials. Now, we still monitor them, we still, you know, try to assist them as much as possible through um sheltered instruction, which is specific strategies to help with bilingual students, but they're not really, they are parent denials for the program. Um because we only offer dual language as our district program.
And so that means that that amount is included in the sixty percent, even though they're choosing to opt out, is that what I'm understanding?
Not for the dual language, so if they are in the dual language program, then that will be part of the program, the parent denies them, they will not be on that campus, that's when they go to Dalton or Uvalde Elementary. That's why on some reports, you'll see EB students at Dalton and um Uvalde Elementary, because the parents have denied the bilingual program.
Y'all trying to recommend them attending?
Every year, we recommend them, try to give them the benefits, we even starting to put a process in place where they have to meet with different people before pulling them out, even in the high school level um to make sure that they understand the full benefits of the program.
Because this only goes to sixth grade, right, and so then what happens after seventh, eighth?
Well, the state of Texas has the guidelines, now we have our own secondary program, so we do have fifty fifty for seventh, eighth, ninth, but it's not really a policy because most policy does end in fifth grade. And so beyond fifth grade, that's kind of our local policy and that's why we're building it through the administrative handbooks. But we do offer seventh, eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh and twelfth. And we do have teachers cook teaching um instruction in Spanish at those levels.
Graber, when you when you uh when you do the, I call it an intake for survey. I'm assuming that we make the the families feel comfortable, they're filling out that information to be as honest as possible, you know, as growing up, it was basically opposite of that, it was don't speak Spanish, try to just, you know, focus on the English language this years ago, back in a long time ago. And so I just wanna make sure that that they're just be honest with, you know, with how you fill out the form, because at the end it benefits your your child, right, and so.
Absolutely.
We we do that?
We do, and we even at the beginning of the year, um a lot of the forms are online, so there really isn't that one-on-one contact because it is online. However, like during pre-K registration, we had a specific table, say, and this is the importance of this form. And we even trying to look at those parents that put inglés, inglés on the home language survey to have that conversation with them, to let them know the benefits of a bilingual program. Um and if the home language is Spanish, then that's okay, like how can we help and support, there are different things that we could do for you. So we had a special table for it, um but most of the form forms are online and so they do it from their home and then our registrars kind of go through there. So as the new new ones um that really weren't captured in that pre-K, we really don't have those conversations. So it's more like after we see them and and process them, we can still register them and get that home language survey done.
Do you find that uh people that go through this kids or children that go through this program as they get older, they tend to be more successful? Like in college or their grades, because now they're they're focusing on both dual languages?
Absolutely, absolutely, they struggle because it's hard, but then when they get into the upper grades, their minds are just blooming and then, you know, research, it's easier to add more languages when you have those two sets, so they're actually multilingual, which we know that's the global idea these days is to be that multilingual. It's it's an asset to have.
Find a good balance and then you feed off of each other. You know, the guys that are fluent in one, you know, they help each other out, so.
Yes, sir.
Totally encourageable.
This was just information, if you have any additional questions, I'll make sure I'll get with um Dr. Fadon and Miss Ayala and our rest of our team to help any other questions that y'all may have before August.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Item five D, item of information on local district update EIC.
That's you too, Ms. Graber.
So the next one on EIC is um for class ranking. Um and so this one, uh Mr. Serna, myself, uh Tasby, we were all kind of in on this. A lot of the red that you see taken out is um it has to do with like grading policies and not particular ranking. And so if you notice, like the dual credit is taken out because that is better suited in our grading policy and not in local policy. Um we did add that language in blue, talking about the semesters. Um and that was also approved through Mr. Serna, saying class rank shall not include semesters from a course that is retaken. Um in that we identified um the next section with uh graduating classes, so we also removed the pre-AP um from the language because we do not have permission to use that language, so we removed pre-AP. Um and then the next piece that we are updating is we are taking out the advanced twelve and honors ten due to high school committees and the policy and what they are looking at is for graduating class, starting with this freshman group, uh advanced and honors will be that ten points and then the regular will be zero points and we're talking about weighted courses. And so um we also took out early graduates because that is a different section. Um and so we and the rest of the red is we are just moving that language to where it lives in other policy or into our grading guidelines.
So all of that language at the very beginning is replaced by the this blue, right, it's not redacted, but everything weighted gray system is all this new blue down here, is that right?
Yes, ma'am. And and the language was twice, so they just removed the section, we had it actually printed twice, so that's why one is still there and one is removed.
Is is the early college kids in here somewhere or is that?
The early college, early graduates, they're not really early colleges, early graduates and they are, that information according to Tasby needs to be moved to EI and FMH. And so that's where that language will live is with that early graduates in those policies.
You feel that this is gonna be like a, it's gonna level the playing field?
Um some of the conversations at the high school was students enrolling in the AP and then not taking the test. And so just having that AP honors um also allows for some dual credit, you know, it's just not trying to push one certain course for that extra two points and then not following through, like the dual credit will have a chance to go to college, whereas the AP, if you don't take the test, it will not be transferred to college. So the high school really felt that this would be a fair kind of playing field. One of the things that we are discussing is tracking because it's not on cohort, it's on graduating class. So when those students are applying for early graduation, putting that in the transcript to are putting that in the application, so we're able to go back and look at transcripts and be very intentional with those pieces. So we are adding some more administrative policies or regulations on us to make sure that we don't miss anything because someone's graduating early.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Item five E, item of information regarding empowerment of community and action foundation.
I'd like to invite up Mr. Lalo Castillo to the podium to present.
Good evening, Board Superintendent, congratulations Superintendent on that nomination for leadership. This is very important, that's great to hear. Uh today, we're gonna do a presentation. Um my name's Malina Vanzalbi, the one uh actually speaking on the presentation, we worked on this together. This is a vision, a dream, a project that's coming together by uh quite a few people, but I'm gonna introduce uh Lalo Castillo.
Thank you, we started, start this uh started a year and a half ago, excuse me, my allergies are uh about a year, uh year and a half ago, started the thought process. As you can see, initially, the community was talking about a boys' girls' club, a youth club. What aside at Rock Elementary. Talk about a park, several other things. Then gradually, it it grew into a community center. The project that was served, the whole community, not only the youth. And so we started working in that direction. And so what we have here, basic guideline, what we've done and what we're proposing. Through the presentation. We're gonna have, hopefully, we'll have some time for you to ask questions. It's very advanced in terms of contacted funding resources.
Excuse me, before y'all continue, Mario, is there any way to increase the volume?
Yeah.
We can barely hear them.
Thank you.
Hello?
That's better.
Is that better? Okay.
For a deaf guy, that's pretty.
There you go. Um so our presentation is the Empowerment Community and Action Foundation Corporation. And so uh Lalo was the founder of that, we do have information up at the top of the screen, but that's gonna change as we develop and we make changes. All right, so the first thing we have up on the screen is the agenda, so what we're gonna be covering. We're gonna be um introducing uh some of our directors are here today, they were able to come in and also join us. We're gonna talk about the mission, we're gonna talk about ECAF history, the project development, a little bit of what you heard a moment ago from Lalo. Um the center that the center that we're looking at, that he's looking at, the name will be Centro de los Anquiles. I will be talking about the community center and what it would provide. Also, the resource people and supporters that he has uh made contact with. So our directors. So our directors, um you've got Mr. Castillo, he's our chairman for the directors. We have Jesse Moreno as well. Uh Jesse, well, can we have you come up to the front, please? Moreno's on his way, most of you familiar with him. We also uh have Ernest Santos, one of our directors. Ernest, if you're here, you can go to the front, we have Maria Elena Muñoz Martinez. And we have Diana Coro. Some of these people are shy to come up. This is the group of directors that will be working on this endeavor. And we're very proud to have them give their time to the community, give time to all the um committees and activities that we're going to have to do and and bring together. This is a very huge, huge project and we're hoping that at the end that we do justice to our community, which is very important. Y'all like to have a seat up front so that you're not standing the whole presentation? Our mission. What is our mission, our mission is to empower the young people of Uvalde, especially those most lacking in opportunities and resources to attain their fullest potential as productive, healthy and compassionate members of the community. We need to be reaching out to our young people. You see all the people up here, we're gonna be gone a couple of years. We need to make sure we steal that in our community, in our young children. Someone was talking about how do we prevent things um Someone was talking about how do we prevent things in high school and middle school? Start with your kinder, children, instill that in them. What is the history? As you see here, Mr. Castillo founded ECAF after the mass shooting, school shooting at Rob Elementary on May twenty fourth, twenty second. ECAF was based on the premises that we can best serve those needs by leveraging community resources and providing foundational support for children and families in our community, which is very important. He formed a core group of community members to begin the work of seeking not only accountability for the tragic event, also finding a means by which the community of Uvalde can better serve the social and economical needs of the citizens who are eighty-five percent Hispanic. We seek to accomplish the mission and vision of ECAF through collaboration partnerships with government entities, civil organizations, community members who serve and live in Uvalde. We also seek to work organizations, to work with organizations and individuals who have a vested interest in creating a brighter and safer future for all citizens of Uvalde. This project was developed by encompassing the general community and more specifically the neighborhoods on South Highway ninety. Majority of the residents expressed the need for a multi-purpose community center. Centro de los Angeles. What is it about? It's going to be efforts will be coordinated with UCISD, city and county with corporations and foundations to construct a multi-center, a multi-service community center near and at the Rob Elementary site. We're hoping to work together. We need to bring our community. We need to reunite our community. So not only do we want to have something in remembrance because we don't want to forget the tragedy, we don't want to forget our children. But we're also going to have future children. So we need to make sure that we work together. Where we can offer recreational programs and services. The center will include a conference room and classrooms for both youth and adults, a state of the art fitness center, a theater, an auditorium, a cafeteria and dining area, an indoor basketball court, and many much more. It's not listed here. Space would also be used and available for art installations, historical exhibits, and spaces to gather and present local history. I was to say preserve. The center will include the latest security technology available designed and installed by a national security expert. Annual fundraising projects will help maintain operating expenses. The center will provide a small classroom for tutoring, advanced centers, robotics, computer labs, advanced mathematics, and entrepreneurship. Entrepreneurship. Something like lips are like sticking together. Entrepreneurship and AI Labs. And of course, the acronym is for Advanced Technology. Hoping to have student internships, provide a learning experience and skills development in a professional setting, improve state of the art rating, improve state ratings by supporting the UCISB. So one of the most important things that when we looked at this and we're working on this is how can we support our schools? That's, that's one goal we need to do. How do we support? We've been talking about, you know, every, every year we saw that grant coming down. We're losing students. Where are they? How are we going to get them back? How are we going to do? So this is part of what we want to do also. Also work in conjunction with the school. Provide citizens with a understanding of the mechanisms of democracy, our rights, freedoms, and it is important to acknowledge that we need to exercise our rights. We need to get out and vote. If you, if you want your voice heard, then go vote. That's important. Opportunities to proactively engage the youth in community life, provide high quality parent and family engagement, citizenship and adult education. Provide mental health support services that would address depression, anxiety and substance use. To have a law enforcement office that will have a high visual presence at the center. This is very important for us to feel safe, for the community to be able to say, I'm going to come into this center, but I'd like to feel safe. It's important. The next thing we're going to look at is resources and corporations. Lalo has been in contact with several people. And he'll be speaking on that in a few minutes. The architects that he's been talking to is Professor Michael Benedict out of the University of Texas of Austin. He's also been in contact and having conversations with Greg Durkins, an architect. He is the architect that designed the nine eleven monument in New York. And he is the person that has agreed that if we could bring him down here, he'll do that for us as well. And that's amazing to be able to work with this gentleman. Durkins was commissioned, Durkins was commissioned in nineteen eighty-nine for designing the Biblica Alexandra, reviving the ancient library in Alexandria, Egypt, followed by commissions in a Norwegian National Opera and a ballet in also. So he has quite a few architectural monument buildings under his belt. And I know at this point, we do have the webpage listed on our page, and this is for the audience. If you want to, if you want to go in and take a look at some of those buildings. Is there any way for him to click into that, into that link? We don't have time. Moving on. The next slide we have is the resource people and supporters, supporters and the people who are available to assist us. So we have the Honorable William Mitchell, Judge Mitchell. We have the former mayor, Donald Bankbachten. We have Monica Muñoz Martinez. We also have Hector Gonzalez. And we have Maria Elena Muñoz Martinez. The following people that we have in our contact list is Ernest Santos with Security, Vince DePicia, our city manager, Dr. Gregory. And then the Uvalde Chamber Conference. We have Ida Escamia. And lastly, we have Conroy and Conrad and Robert. I'm sorry, it's difficult to read. It's so dark. And they are the real-time management security company that Lalo also was founder of. I'm going to go ahead and have Lalo, you want to come up? You have questions for you? All right. So time for questions.
So what, what is it that the organization is seeking from the board? Or from the district?
What is it that you're seeking from the district?
Oh, from the district? Actually, what we need is your support. More importantly, a document giving us the authority. Father Memorial Hospital, some semi-foundation program. He got a, believe a twenty-five year lease. We're asking at least a seventy-five year.
How long? I'm sorry. How long?
How long?
Yeah. How long is the lease? I couldn't hear you.
This is a human, human project.
Thank you for that presentation and, and I think it is very important that we do get some type of center out there on our, on our west zone area for the community members. How is your, how, how will all this be funded?
This will be funded. We surprised the superintendent the first time we met with her. She thought we were in her office asking for money. No, this, this will be private sources foundations that we, we have some of them in line already. We directors and I have been working at this for over a year and a half. So we have been waiting for the whole school to but the funding will be coming probably from three different sources. Not a multitude of sources, just three sources. We're dealing with, we're talking to some very, very big corporations that are willing to help us.
I have a question. How, how do you plan to in, include the, the community voice in this? And I'm wondering if you have done any surveys to assess if they would actually be interested in going to the site? I know that there's a lot of emotion tied to the site. And so I'd be interested to find out that first about the community. But also how much community input do you plan to assess when you're addressing all of these issues? There's a lot of, a lot of, a lot of programs that you plan to implement. But I know we have a lot of resources here in, in Uvalde, but it would be wonderful to have it on that side of town. But I am interested to see how the community, if you have done any kind of surveys.
Well, yeah. Actually, the data that we used was developed by Dr. Pogue. Okay. It's an extensive report that I'll make available to you. I think our superintendent is familiar with that because she joined me at, at the presentation when Dr. Pogue was here. But we have that, that available. He has extensive data, not only in the city, but the county and some of the areas surrounding areas.
And we're planning to do the survey. We're just waiting to see what, if we get an approval or not to start to canvas and ask what the community, if the community is interested in it. So we're in the process of creating this right now.
I think it would really influence our decision to find out what the community, if they do want something there. And just because it's such a sensitive area, I, I don't know if we could even entertain the, the offer, entertain it at this time without even knowing what community input would say. Just because it's so sensitive, we have to make sure and include them in some way, even some type of meeting where we encourage them to come out and voice their opinion and get feedback on that, just like what we're doing for the memorial. We're trying to include that, but it's such a sensitive site that I don't know if it's just difficult to.
It is. And this is why you said, this is the same. This is why when we had conversations, we're, we like to do that to get together with some families, get together with the community. Because it's a community center, but we want to also be sensitive to the families, which is really important to us. But we can't have any meetings or anything until we present it to the board. We wanted to present to you today so that you understand what is the foundation wanting to do. And it's going to be endeavor that's going to take more, it's going to be more than just a year completed. There's, there's a lot of logistics that are going to fall into this. And we need to take in consideration everyone's feelings, even, even myself. I live like maybe two, two blocks away. And even to this day, even just talking here about the children, you know, it just, it's, it's hard for me. Because as I'm speaking to you, memories come back. And I can't imagine how the families are feeling. I just can't as a mother. So most definitely, we're going to take that. And we had a discussion the last two weeks, Lalo and I. That's something that I'm going to be taking over. So I will be working with the mental health. I'll be working with the families if they allow me to, to visit with them. So you're correct. That's, that's the most important thing.
And also, I mean, just with the facilities, if, if anything can be repurposed or if nothing can, I think it's, needs to be asked. I mean, I don't know how families would feel. And I mean, there's, there's so many, there's four hundred families, if you would really think about it.
Correct. We have a lot of work ahead of us.
It's because I definitely understand your concerns and we've, we've taken all of that into consideration now. We understand that this piece of property is very sensitive. It's, it's, it's holy land for us now, right? So, but at the same token, we want to make sure that we do something that's good for the entire community. You know, not only the people that were affected, I was affected. My wife was affected. She teaches, she, she used to teach there. We lost a niece there. So what we're trying to do is bring something together for this. We want to, we want a partnership. We're going to have, we're going to partner with every organization within this community. We've talked to everybody from the city, the county, the college. And, and they, they in turn have talked to other people as well, local politicians, as well as other people from out of town and stuff. So we've had, we've actually had to turn down money already because we don't have a site. We've lost funding already for this year. We were, we were asked to, we've been invited to apply next year. And they tell us that we can, we'll definitely get the funds. They wouldn't tell us how much we lost. But because we couldn't get this done, unfortunately, the information wasn't provided to y'all. We provided it to your past president who was supposed to visit with y'all. And it didn't happen. We didn't find that out till about a couple of weeks ago when Lalo and Mr. Moreno visited with our president, current president now. JJ, thank you for taking the time last week and meeting with us. And we provided him with the information needed. I know that Jesse Leece and I have visited about this and we want to do something good for the community. We want to partner up with, with everybody again, once again, and all the institutions to be able to provide what, what's already being provided, but perhaps maybe doing it in that part of town, in that center. And, and to make something good out of something bad that happened. And at the same time, I understand where you're coming from in regards to the families and we definitely are going to sit down and visit with them and try to bring them on board and try to see what we can do to, if, we don't know what they have planned, whether they want to do their own memorial or not. And that's what we're going to discuss with them. But if they want us to help them, then we already have some resources. Lalo has been working on this for some time. The majority of money is coming, like he said, it has, it's been from three corporations that have been in touch with him. Okay. So we got to take care of him. I may, I don't like it when he gets sick because I'm kind of concerned because we need to make sure we know who these corporations are, just in case it happens, you know? Yeah. So, but, but keep in mind, we're, it's, it's going to be for the entire community. Yes, we are saying it's going to be at Rob's. We'd like to have it at Rob's School. And it is that part of town that's leaving this, but it's for the entire community. You know, JJ, you're You know, JJ, you're involved with uh, Big Brothers and Sisters and.
It would be unfair to turn this area just as a memorial. But, you know, this is, this is, that's one of the things that the foundations like. That this is a community center. That's going to serve the whole community. It's not only memorial, it could be combination. In my opinion, I may be biased, but first of all, we're so lucky. I don't know if any of you understand, to have this architect for this. He's one of the top ten architects in the world. And he's willing to do this for us. Now, this whole project can serve as a memorial. For a hundred years. Depends on the families, if they wanna do something separate, there's enough room there. I've spoken to two different families at two different times. The answer that I gave is, we haven't been able to get together on what we want. So it's been two years. And so, wow, yeah, uh, this would be beautiful if they said, let the architect can design a memorial, monument, whatever they want. Incorporate it and let this be, you know, something.
Well, and I'm not against it, I, I just wanna make sure, you know, going over the list of everybody that's involved. I, I don't see families involved. I don't see somebody from a family that's on the directors or I don't see other um, that have.
It's a difficult situation because we can't have all of them.
No, 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 and I, I understand that, I'm not suggesting that, but they do need to have a voice.
And I'm not being argumentative, I know.
I'm gonna step in right here.
But the fact is, the fact is that, you know, they, they have different views. And the thing is that if we had the time, yes, to take another year to determine who's gonna do what. Now, if they get together, my opinion, what they need to do is get together and select three people, four people to work with us. We'll do that, but for us to approach the whole group, it would be difficult.
And, 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 and I, I, I kind of, I, I do agree with uh, trustee Gonzalez. Cause you know, from sitting on the board, um, I've, I've had both sides. Like, we need to do something on the property or no, we don't need to do something on the property. So as board member, we're, I'm getting from both sides, um, and we need to do what's best for the community. I'm, I, again, I think it's a great, uh, great idea, great to do, but I'd like to ask Mr. Rizzo, uh, Rizzo. Um, what, what are your thoughts on this?
Uh, thank you, TJ, the uh, since, again, it's sensitive, very sensitive, right? Are you, just so that I'm clear, are you asking for a letter, like a letter of intent, a letter basically authorizing to enter, like in some kind of discussion? Or you're asking also for a lease?
Yes, uh, basically, basically, in order for us to start raising funds, and it obviously is gonna take us some time to raise the funds. So uh, in order to be able to do that, our plan of action is, you know, our, we have to have a site designated to be able to provide to our stakeholders is gonna help us in this project. Especially the architect, you know, what, what's been failed to mention here is that, that, that architect is doing this project for us free of charge. Okay, so um, the other thing is that uh, if, if we have a site, then, then they can begin to kinda play around with it and try to figure out, okay, what, what are we looking for? And they can start designing and putting something together. So what we're needing to answer your question is, is perhaps maybe if y'all would agree is um, a, a letter of understanding, a memorandum or something of some sort, uh, of, of support that uh, that you would consider doing something like this, right, so that we can, we can take it and run with it. And uh, so that's what we're asking for at this point in time.
But I think um, President Lambert and myself met with Mr. Castillo and Mr. Moreno a few weeks ago. We had this discussion and I think it's a great idea, I love every part of it. Um, and, and I'd asked Mr. Castillo, Mr. Moreno, you know, when they were able to get running with this, to consider the families.
Definitely.
Um, you know, some of them being on the board, decision making, that was a big thing. But what, what gets us is we don't have, we, we can't give you that letter of intent because that building does not belong to us right now. And until all the lawsuits have been cleared, we, we, we can't do it. As much as I would say today, it's a great idea, let's talk to the family, let's talk to the community, that's our setback right now.
With all due respect, Miss Betis, I, I, that, that land does belong to you. Okay, there is a judgment, because we have, obviously, we still have a criminal investigation going on.
Right, right.
Perhaps maybe civil duties, everything, but that land belongs to the people of this community. So it still belongs to us. Now, we're not saying that we, we need that land like tomorrow, so we can do groundbreaking, because it's gonna take us a little bit to, to be able to put this whole project together and be able to raise the funds to be able, so we're just asking that for y'all to consider, respectfully consider what we're proposing and the idea that we're proposing, and perhaps maybe uh, if y'all would agree, then at that point in time, have something in writing that, yes, you do, because the land is always gonna be yours. Let's say, for example, ten years from now, we do build something on there and it's ready to go and something happens, it, it's always gonna revert back to the school district. It's not gonna be ours, it's not gonna be, but it's gonna belong to the citizens of this community.
What is, what is, um, I mean, what is, it's something we'd have to run through legal, right, obviously?
Yes, well, I think what would have to happen is y'all would have to write the MOU. You have to come up with the language of what the agreement will look like with us and what you offer us in that agreement and the terms of that agreement. And then that's when we go through legal and we can go a step further, but it, it comes from you. It's a memorandum of understanding to us, since it is UCISD land, then it would be to us, I don't.
For example, obviously, it's under a injunction. If there's an injunction too, and obviously we cannot take possession. I understand that. But in the agreement, that can be specified. We don't have access to that land until those injunctions are lifted. Not a big deal, takes a year, that's fine. We would like at least five years grace period, so that we can do the groundbreaking. In other words, if we go beyond five years, that the land comes back to the school district. That's not gonna happen. We will have it right after. But again, the main thing that we're asking, Mr. Rizzo's, Gonzalez, is for the board to take some kind of action. We've lost a year and a half. Of course, we didn't know what was going on.
The, the, the thing for me is I can't, I can't speak for the, I'm an uncle and I can't speak for the, like the moms and the dads, that's a hard part. And without getting a feel, without getting, you know, to, to have that conversation with them. It's, it's really hard, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm totally supportive of building something for the kids, get them out of trouble, keep them busy. You know, that leads to them coming to the school, all kinds of good things happen like that, right? But it's such a, I'm gonna call it a sacred place, man, I mean, it's just so hard. And that, that's, that, that's where I'm at, Lalo, honestly, like, um, I believe in you and I believe in, in what you're, what you're trying to do, but it's just so difficult. I'm sorry?
Can I, can I make one clarification? Um, when we're talking about the center, we're not talking where the school is located. As states. Uh, that sounds off. So, because there's, there's a lot of property there. So um, the center would not be at all built, the school is located right now.
So I think that that might need to be included, like when you do this MOU, give us an idea with, with what is happening in that, in that property and where it would be located.
Correct.
What, I, I think that's important, um.
That's why we need to talk to the families, that's why we need to talk to everyone involved, we need to have all those meetings to have that discussion. But just to clarify tonight, that center is not gonna be located where the school is located right now.
It's like on the backside?
The backside, it would have to be on the backside.
Well, thanks for clarifying that, because that's, that's pretty important. I think um, it was behind you, it was one of the things you wanted to say something.
Good evening, and I am so happy to see each one of you there uh, as board members representing this community and offering leadership for this community. I have served as a trustee for this school district and I know that you are elected officials to a position that you could have very easily chosen to run to another position that paid you a salary. But you chose to do this for the children that you serve, for this community. And there's some hard decisions that need to be made on your part. But I do know that Uvalde CIST is a wonderful school district. It's created wonderful opportunities for my own children, for myself. And I know that you have that dedication to the children that you serve. Now, I chose to be a part of this endeavor that Lalo was his dream and brainchild, but our goal is to serve the community just like you serve and that we need a partnership with you. A memorandum of understanding is that, a memorandum of understanding with this foundation and you. We can articulate what our vision might be and ask you to look at it and join us. If we have to tweak it, we'll tweak it. We need to get started, we have lost opportunities for monies. This will not be a project that's gonna take just ten thousand dollars or one million dollars. It's gonna be a project that's not gonna take one year, five years. But we are in it for this community just like you are. And what I ask you to do is that, if you allow us to present to you our memorandum of understanding or what we think needs to be in that for you to consider. I ask you to, to view it and to respond quickly. I know you have lots of things to do, you're about to start a new school year. But this is an important piece for this community to come and heal. We are not going to leave families out. As a family member of two children who died and one who was injured, then I can tell you that I'm also a family member serving in this community. I may not live in Uvalde at this time, but I am a taxpayer in this community. And I love this town because this is where I grew up and where my daughters grew up. And I can tell you now that we are committed to serve this community and these children. If we go in this dream beyond just what we can do as a remembrance gardens for these children that have passed and the teachers that passed. I can tell you that it's going to serve this community and you are going to help us get there because you are the leaders in this town who were selected by this community to serve them and to make those tough decisions and to make the inroads that we need for our community to heal and to say that as much pain as we have for the loss of our babies and our fellow educators, we are here still to serve the community. And that Uvalde has had growing pains. We can think back to the seventies, when I was in school, we survived those troubling times and we are here still. Please consider this petition to you to be our partners. And again, I thank you for your service, because you get a lot of calls. You are asked to do a lot and you're not paid one red cent. But you chose to do this for this town, for this school, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Superintendent.
Mr. Castillo, were, were you referring the data that we have? Are you talking about Dr. Martinez from UT and all of her data, the, the study that she's done throughout the community? And, and need in this community? Yes, okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I can. No, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We're helping him adjust his. Um, do you have any more questions, Mr.?
I would like to um, just make a uh, request to President Lambert that we make sure that we put something in the agenda for next meeting, next month. Um, whether it's a discussion or considered for approval or.
Okay.
And then, of course, if we can get some type of language on an MOU.
Um, we'll, we'll get you here.
That we can get with legal.
So we can, you can present that to us.
What's a timeline that you think, Ms. Colas, that we would need? Like a language of MOU to get to our legal and?
If I could have it in the next week, I could probably get it turned back around from our legal. Yeah, I mean, y'all are asking for it, the board packet very early now, so that may not be in the board packet. Y'all are okay with that?
As long as legal's able to review it and, um, if we have the MOU.
I can send it to y'all at the same time that I send it to legal.
We can review it later.
Yeah. Yeah, and I will say that um, at the point that I talked to our legal team about an MOU, their advice to us was to wait until we had control of the facilities. Um, but that's different than y'all coming to us for an MOU for just the, the land. It's not, it does not include the site to where we would be talking about a memorial included and and the others, so if we're talking about just the land, then that would, would be more probably doable.
Talking the mic.
Incorporate into this project, that's fine as well. I personally think that the architect can do a much better job on a monument or memorial than anyone else.
This is the architect that did the nine eleven?
Right, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Additionally, at the point that we had spoken, it was our impression that we would have control back of the building in about March, and so it's, that did not happen. And so, here it is, July.
I think if the architect might also be able to assist us with our memorial, that would be nice. If they could include that.
It would be the best.
Yes.
I mean, we.
It would be the best.
Where we are with our budget, we need every cent, everything we can do. In fact, I, I just wish we could get some money out of it to maybe help our teachers. And because it, it is land that, I mean, I guess we could sell and make money on and pay somebody. But, but this is also for a community.
Yes.
And so I, I don't know, I don't know how we make money, Ms. Dandalee. But if there's any, not through selling, no, 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 go ahead.
More importantly, in regards to again, the architect to help us with, with the memorial, is that the funding for it, we can take care of that as well.
Yes, and, and.
We, we're not expecting for the school district, I mean, I got a wife who's gonna retire next year and you're already cutting part of her money this year. So, I mean, that's not a good thing, I just need to throw that in. Anyway, um.
We looked at the budget and then.
Yeah, so we, we.
Glad you're here to see that.
Budget was tough, the county budget was tough, we understand that. We're not asking for any money from any government institution local. Now, having said that, all of a sudden you do come up with money and you do wanna spare some, we'll be more glad to take it, okay? So we don't wanna close any doors, but at the same token, our goal is for, for this project to be funded solely by you know, other organizations, other corporations as well as other foundations, that, that, that's our goal. And, and while y'all are training and, you know, you go out and training and you find somebody that's got some money you wanna give away.
And I think um, one of the things, the reason I'm here is because I would like to improve the west side of our city. It's very important to do that and offer them that opportunity. Uh, where you've been uh, fighting about infrastructure, you know, how we're gonna do all of the sidewalks, lightings and everything. Um, if we bring in the center, those things are gonna be taken care of because they, they're needed. So that's really important to remember. So that's really important to remember, um, as well as we are always considering the families. Here today, you do not see families up here because we're working with organizations, resource people. Uh, we are the voice for those families. We are wanting something great because Rob School, the site belongs to all of us. I went to school there. I lived there. I, my children went eight years there. So the interest in, in that definitely. Um, I am family. I'm, I'm, I'm who I'm referring to. I'm part of that group. I'm family. My nephew was there that day. So definitely that is not going to be forgotten. We're not going to forget our children.
Thank you.
I don't, excuse me.
We're going to say thank you, board. We appreciate everything.
We're planning, nobody wanted to speak. I've met with, uh, one of the families, two of the families, different, different situation, different dates. And, uh, I asked the question, you know, what do you have planned for a memorial? First of all, they were undecided on whether to have the memorial or monument down at the square or at Rob. That was one issue that families were, had a conflict with. The other issue was we, that I heard was we haven't been able to get together on what we want. Okay. It's been two years. Okay? And so one of the individuals said, well, the city promised us seventy-five thousand dollars for a monument. And I'm thinking, Junior, we can do a lot, lot better than that. You know, if you allow us to do this for you. So I think it's to their benefit to partner with us. But all we need from them is an idea of what they want, whether they want to do, we can do the whole project on memorial. Okay. It's on sacred land. That's why we named El Centro de Los Angeles because, uh, we believe, all of us believe angels are still there. So we, we thought about this. But again, what we'll do is we'll present you with a sample, a draft and, uh, a memorandum of understanding. And then we'll present you with the next step, which will be the lease. That way you can take a little time to do that. Now, you're lawyers, have a little experience with lawyers and then you should take.
Yeah, I think, I think, oh, that's, that was the, that's, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. It, it was a great discussion. I, I thank you guys for the presentation. Um, and your board, uh, thank you for your presentation and, uh, making the drive over here, um, to present to us. So I think it's a very, it's something that's really needed in our west zone. And, um, but there's things that we obviously have to consider and make sure that we're doing everything correctly.
Yes, thank you. Thank you to the board. You're a powerful group. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thanks for all the effort, meetings that Dairy Queen pay off, right? I think that meeting was beneficial. So if you want to meet at Dairy Queen again, hey, man, I'm open.
He loves Dairy Queen.
I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. And I will say that, uh, Cal and Laura, um, they do meet. And so if you want to have a meeting in between, I don't want to volunteer y'all, but I know that y'all do. Uh, we're trying to be as open as we can and, and encourage, um, encourage this just because it's important. It is important for our community. So we thank you for, um, taking this on. Um, we just need a little bit more details in, in writing. And so thank you so much.
Like you folks are volunteering, we're doing the same thing. We don't get compensated at all and we're not going to in the future. This is all volunteer work. Whatever little expenses we've had comes out of our pocket. We don't ask for donations or anything.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Move to item, item five F, consider approval of board goals.
Thank you, President Lambert. So last Tuesday night, like I've been mentioning, uh, the board workshop was held to write board goals. And so under domain one, high quality curriculum and effective instruction, the board came up with UC ISD will provide all students with high quality education to improve the overall outcomes for student academic success. And in doing this, student achievement will improve at least three percent in tested subject areas in the meets category by July twenty twenty-five. And C C M R data will improve by twenty percent by September twenty twenty-seven. In domain two, effective, well-supported staff, we said that UC ISD will build trust with stakeholders by focusing on communicating with families, demonstrating professionalism and creating supportive systems for staff to grow professionally. We will increase opportunities for family engagement, increase teacher attendance by at least three percent and support uncertified teachers to become certified, decreasing uncertified teachers by fifty percent. And both of those will happen by June of twenty twenty-five. In domain three, under positive school culture, we said that UC ISD will provide a safe and healthy learning environment by developing a welcoming culture, utilizing an equitable discipline system and providing access to physical and mental health care for all. This will result in at least a three percent increase in student attendance and a three percent reduction in student discipline data by June of twenty twenty-five. And in domain four, alignment of financial wellbeing with student achievement, uh, we said that UC ISD will implement systems for good financial stewardship to include cash handling procedures, inventory management, replacement schedules, and P E M S, which stands for Public Education Information Management System, data entry and validation. These efforts will be written, posted, communicated and tracked for effectiveness and baseline data collection by June twenty twenty-five. Any questions about the goals that we wrote or y'all have had about a week to think about them?
Any questions, comments?
Mr. Board President, I make a motion that we approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five board goals as presented.
I'd like to thank Ms. Colis for leading us on this and bringing us, um, with that Texas Strategic Leadership Initiative. Um, I think this is where I was very nervous actually about that meeting, but after we met and we discussed these goals, um, I'd like to say that I'm, I'm excited about having these goals set and it keeps us focused. So I want to thank you. Um, what that means, the Texas Strategic Leadership Initiative, we're going to be meeting with, uh, uh, two individuals, uh, they're going to be constantly talking to us as leaders, um, as board of trustees and forming goals for the upcoming year. And so this is really exciting. It's something that not every school is being offered and we're very fortunate to be able to receive that free of charge.
Yes.
So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Happy to do it. Excited.
I felt good that day leaving here. And the other best part was that the two professionals guiding us through it, not making, not setting the goals for us, but just kind of as a guardrail, kind of giving us ideas and feedback on language. And the openness to, to be able to, to look at a lot of detail and to be able to change the wording to encompass just all types of different things. So I like that. Thank you so much.
Very welcome. It's great work. Um, I'm proud to work on, um, such an engaged, open board and to be supported by y'all. The district is lucky to have y'all, um, supporting us. And I look forward to continuing the work with Texas Strategic Leadership Initiative and to working with, um, our leadership team in the district to cascade the goals down, right down to the student level. So this is going to be good work.
Motion made by Trustee Pettis, seconded by Trustee Suarez. Any further questions? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item six, items of division of business and finance. A, consider approval of accounts payable checks for June twenty-four.
Thank you, sir. At the regular board meeting held on Monday, May thirteenth, uh, twenty twenty-four, the board recognized the duties of its members. Mr. Jesse Rizzo and Ms. Jacqueline Gonzalez were selected to review and approve the monthly accounts payable bills. So I will turn it over to them.
Um, I spoke with Ms. Bendelieb. Thank you for meeting with me and discussing some questions I had, but I make a motion to approve uh, the district's accounts payable for the month of June twenty twenty-four.
Just second it.
Motion made by Trustee Gonzalez, seconded by Trustee Rizzo. Any further comments? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item six B, consider approval of the resolution of the district's truth in taxation officer.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President Lambert. Uh, we're going to have Ms. Bendelieb come to the podium to talk about that. We've got board policy C C G Local Revenue Source Ad Valorem Tax states that an officer or employee designated by the board shall calculate the no new revenue tax and the voter approved tax rate for the district. And she's going to talk to us about that.
Good afternoon again. This was also approved, I think, last July. It's an annual resolution naming the chief financial officer as having responsibility for calculating the no new revenue tax rate and the voter approved tax rate for the district.
Another question, um, should, should we have a board member, um, present with you at those meetings or do you not? Is it, do you usually just go to those meetings by yourself?
It, that's really not a meeting. It, it's a big, long form. And honestly, Mo Casey helps me through it.
Okay. I was just wondering.
Yeah, I mean, every year they make it more complicated. Used to, it was pretty, uh, easy. Now it's probably about a six-page form with all kinds of required information. So Mo Casey is very generous and they help a lot of districts through those calculations.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion to approve the resolution naming the district's truth in taxation officer.
Motion made by Trustee Suarez, seconded by Trustee Pettis. Any further questions? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Item six C, consider approval of an agreement with the Uvalde C I S D Moving Forward Foundation.
Thank you, President Lambert. Um, after the tragedy on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty, uh,
Oh, twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. Thank you. Sorry about that. The Uvalde C I S D Moving Forward Foundation, a Texas nonprofit corporation, was formed to replace Rob Elementary with a new elementary school campus. The foundation already had contracts with the architect for the design of the new elementary school. And Ms. Bendelieb is here to talk about our agreement with Moving Forward Foundation.
Thank you, ma'am. The members that have been on the board for a little while, y'all remember, I believe it was January, when our auditors, Garza and Gonzalez, presented the results of our, um, single audit. And that was one of the items that they had a recommendation is that we needed to get an M O U with the Moving Forward Foundation as far as what the funds from the state were to be used for, how we would account for them, how we would re, reply back to the state as to how the funds were using. So we have worked on this along with the Moving Forward Foundation's, uh, legal counsel, the district's legal counsel, as well as we have had our auditing firm look at it to make sure that it meets the requirements that they needed as far as the money we received from the state and that it meets the Moving Forward's foundation's need as well as the district's.
Entertainer motion pass.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion, the approval of the agreement with the Uvalde C I S D Moving Forward Foundation as presented.
Motion made by Trustee Suarez, seconded by Trustee Canones. Any?
It was Trustee Pettis.
Trustee Pettis, I'm sorry. Any further questions, comments? Hearing or seeing none? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Item seven, items of division of curriculum and instruction. Item seven A, consider approval of memorandum of understanding for, for All-Stars.
Right. Thank you, President Lambert. This agreement between the Greater San Antonio After School All-Stars, a nonprofit organization, and After School All-Stars Uvalde, joined with the National After School All-Stars and the Uvalde Consolidated Independent School District, acting by and through its superintendent and approved by its school district's board of trustees. Um, this is our M O U for our after-school All-Stars program, um, which we serve between one hundred and one hundred and fifty students. Ms. Graber is at the podium to answer any questions that y'all may have about After School All-Stars. But this is just our annual M O U that we sign with After School All-Stars. They provide a long list here of, um, after-school activities for our students. And we are grateful to partner with them.
Yeah, I've heard great things about the, about the program.
Yes, the only thing our principals, I wanted to update in the M O U from last year to this year is, um, adding a language with safety and security to mirror the, um, walkie-talkies communications as well as the door procedures and gate procedures. So that's the only addition from last year to this year.
I, I see that there's a requirement for a hundred students. And so I guess that means that, um, Batesville won't be able to because of the amount of students. Is there any way we could get services over there, maybe like once a week or something? Or is there any way we can negotiate that with the All-Star program?
I know they have additional programs at Batesville, um, Get Fit. And I know there is the after-school support for that that Ms. Gonzalez works with that has that. So there, there is support for the kids.
It says, um, for a hundred students, not to exceed a hundred and fifty. Is it just whoever signs up first or?
Yes, ma'am. Typically the principals, they do, kind of like the ACE flowover. So ACE has a cap too. So they just try to provide additional support. And so when an opening opens up at ACE, then they move to ACE and then they recruit from work to fill in that hatred. So, um, it's kind of like an overflow for ACE until we can find spots for them.
Thank you. Well, we have anything for the sixth graders at Mottolos? Cause they see there's K through six at the dual language, but I don't know if that's possible. Is there something from Mottolos, uh, since they're housing the sixth graders there now?
That is something that we'd have to go back to negotiations because I think there's only three site coordinators.
Oh, okay. But we do have ACE. I know that we do have programming.
And they're at Mottolos.
Yes, we do have programming for it. It's just not All-Stars.
Right. I know this is just such a great program. That's why. I've heard really great things about it, but anyhow, thank you.
Mr. Board President, I make a motion to approve the partnership between UC ISD and the After School All-Stars Program Services.
Make second.
Motion made by Trustee Suarez, seconded by Trustee Gonzalez. Any further comments, questions? Hearing none or seeing none? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Last thing on the list is adjournment, but I want to say something before we do that. Um, I want to thank the audience for sticking out with us here in the non, almost non-air-conditioned building.
Ham is Bentley thinking.
Part of the budget, part of the budget, right? I want to thank central office people. I want to thank central office people that come and brief us for all the work they have to put into four hundred and something pages worth of stuff for us to read. And uh, anyway, just wanted to say thanks. Would that entertain a motion for?
Um, certainly, one more thing for Lambert. Um. Today we had a terrible fire in Batesville. And uh, the house that was owned by Mrs. Nelson, which was our teacher. Um, you know, she's since passed, but you know, it's a lot of memories there. Awesome teacher. As a matter of fact, I had my first uh, milkshake in the fourth grade. I had no idea what it was and I remember her for that. And just so many memories, but that house burnt today. Um, the gentleman that lives, elderly man, he was able to, to get out in time luckily. And I just wanted to commend the fire departments, um, Batesville, of course, shorted first. And uh, and then La Pryor and I believe uh, Uvalde or can't remember what it was, but. I will tell you that um, there's so many people to recognize today and so many people that, that actually got so close. I believe one of their uniforms actually melted. The house was entirely brought down, the, the truck, the light. Um, they were trying to save the, the old man's truck and the light, you could just see it where it started to melt. But my daughter and head who's still here, I saw him at three thirty this morning out there and I still see him here. My dear, thank you so much for going out there and, and, and uh, there's just so many leaders there, but you were one of them. Um, as soon as you got off that truck, you stepped into that roll and, and you took control, helped take control of the situation. Uh, making sure that the other cars that were in the sheds didn't catch on fire, that you salvage whatever you could. And there were two, there was many cats there and, and he was able to, to, we lost one dog, but you know, we saved one dog, so. You know, um, Mr. Chewy, thanks you, my dear. Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn?
President, I make a motion that we adjourn. I second.
Motion made by trustee Pettis, seconded by trustee Gonzalez.